I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, fill us with your Spirit and courage so that we might bring the gifts you have given to us to this meeting. We ask that you be with all who are sick or hurting from a loss. Grant them healing and compassion during a difficult time. Bring unity to our community and let all come together. We ask that you be with our students, teachers, and school personnel as we start another year. Lead and protect them in school, at home, and in their travels. Open our ears, our minds, and our hearts to each other and our community. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Number three is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the minutes for the July 11th, 2022, regular enclosed meeting and the July 18th, 2022 recess enclosed meeting.
What approval?
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, public hearing ordinance 2226. Consider a zoning map amendment 2207 rezoning of six parcels totaling four acres on Johnson Street and Highway 52 North from General Highway Business District and R10 to Heavy Industrial. This is a continued public hearing that was opened at another meeting, and it is a public hearing. And I will allow anyone who cares to speak to come forward in just a minute. I'll ask our staff to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So at the last meeting, staff was requested to look at some options for the property. So I'll provide a summary to you. I'll give kind of an update on that. So as the property is currently zoned, the applicant may maintain the lot with less than five junk, inoperable, or unlicensed vehicles on the business. As an option, staff previously provided the applicants with a list of approximately thirty different properties in the city, which were zoned HID, or would potentially be appropriate to be rezoned HID. So the more than five junk, inoperable, or unlicensed vehicles can be kept there long term. The applicants did not wish to proceed with that option. Staff subsequently suggested that the applicants build a simple shed or garage on the property to store the vehicles. These would no longer be outside. There is no violation there with that. The applicants didn't want to do that either for financial reasons. The applicants are still requesting the properties be rezoned HID so that the vehicles can still be stored there. Planning and zoning board and staff highly recommend against this. HID in this location is not consistent with the future land use map, would represent spot zoning, and would allow for several uses which could be in conflict with both the adjacent neighborhood and other commercial businesses. It could also prohibit several retail uses on this property in the future, which are currently allowed. Staff believe this would be a bad precedent for the city as well. Staff did research the option of amending the current tow and storage yard definitions in the ordinance. We also contacted Mr. King and his partners via email, and we were told there are more. That most vehicles would be removed within thirty days with the exception of a few, and there would be on average about twenty-five vehicles on the property. Staff currently estimates on commercially zoned portions of the existing properties, there is approximately one-half acre which could be utilized for vehicle storage in the current area. While this is currently not allowed on them, they could easily manage those numbers without including additional residentially zoned property as well. We've included about fifteen other jurisdictions in a code comparison matrix, which you should have. Be happy to open that if you have any questions. That includes Stanley County, Locust, and Oakboro. It shows how each deal with tow yards and junk yards. What we found was that most do not differentiate between the two. Of those that do, most tow yards do not include storage of junk or inoperable vehicles, and almost all of both of these uses were restricted to industrial properties with conditions. The only other way that staff has seen to accomplish what the applicants are requesting besides spot zoning this property would be a text amendment. This could be done by amending junk yards to allow them in GHBD or to amend tow yards definition to allow them in GHBD as a special use with conditions. This will take additional time and require planning board approval. While this would be a better option than spot zoning these parcels to heavy industrial, staff still has concerns with the precedent this will set and with enforcement throughout the city. City Council has a few options tonight. First, this is a rezoning. You may approve the requested rezoning in whole or in part and adopt a statement amending the future land use map. That would probably be the appropriate way to do this. This would allow junkyard uses on this property. Staff does not recommend for this. You could also deny the requested rezoning with an inconsistency statement. Staff does recommend that. Were the rezoning denied, city council could do nothing and allow the applicants to pursue other options on the property provided by staff, or could request staff to draft a text amendment to tow yard definitions and criteria for approval as detailed above. Staff believes that amending city ordinance to make exception for the applicant is likely to open the door to many other vehicle storage lots, which may be worse than Mr. King's. This could make enforcement across the city harder, and the city's goal of cleaning up junk vehicles harder. Staff recommends against this also.
Count, I have any questions with staff? Hearing none, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Just do your name and address, Brandon.
Okay. Brandon King. My address is 1708 US Highway 52 North. My physical address where I reside is in Almaral, 34863 Ellis Springs Court. So I know when we left last meeting, you said for us to get together and try to work together, and that's great. And I thought that's what we were going to do. In fact, I got an email from Mr. Swain last week, I believe, saying that we were going to see about getting this continued so we could work on it some more. And then tonight, it sounds like we have no desire to work together. So I was a little disappointed that, I guess, a little confused, I guess, I would say. I thought we were just getting this continued so we could work on it. I thought they were too busy to work on it, so I thought we were going to meet later. So I'm shocked, I guess.
Anyone else here to speak for or against? If not, I have one letter I need to read into the record. The meeting to consider requests zoning map amendment 2207 by MHK Properties to rezon properties located on US 52 North. Tax records 1402, 28, 7505, 24949, and a property on Johnson Park. Tax record 1455, 24534, from General Highway Business District and R10 General Residential District to Heavy Industrial District. Being a citizen of the city of Almaral, I believe a junkyard in the city limits is very distasteful in any city. We would be grateful if the junkyard was not in a residential area of the city of Almaral. There is plenty of
Land.
Land in Stanley County for this kind of property. We think using our city property for a junkyard is not a compliment for our city now or never. Remember the junkyards years ago, not in the city limits where your children played, on the street looking at the junkyard. Thank you for the respect and the proper way of life today. And it's signed a resident of Almaral.
Out of curiosity, can we accept that though?
This Brett said I could, or said we should, let me put it that way.
There again, you know, it's not a junkyard, you know? We're not selling parts or anything like that. We're just told when they're until we get their approval to move them.
Anyone else care to speak for or against? What's your wishes? Are you ready to close the public hearing?
I just have a question I would like to ask, just Kevin. Just so I'm clear. We had, this was last, we had, the public hearing was last opened on June 20th. And at the conclusion of that, we asked that all the parties get together.
Right.
Okay.
We had conversations, Travis Swain had conversations over email with the applicant.
Okay, so there was some communication both ways.
Absolutely, yeah. And I guess you have a third option. You could choose to continue this again if you wanted to. The point being that the other option that we sought of this, besides rezoning, would be a text amendment. So that, you know, that's up to y'all to decide. You can continue this, I guess, as long as you want to with the rezoning, but if you're going to do a text amendment, you don't really need rezoning, so.
Well, and that's, I guess, that's a protocol kind of issue. Just so everybody's, and I don't know if we need to be doing this, maybe not during the public hearing. Maybe once the public hearing is closed, I'll ask you this question.
I think if you have a question, you should ask it now before the public hearing is closed.
Is that right, Brett?
I think it really depends on if you're going to close the public hearing and not postpone it again. I wouldn't close the public hearing if there's an option to postpone it that council is still considering.
Then the question I would have. As it is right now, the proposal is just to rezone, yes or no?
Yes, that's what's being considered.
That's what's being considered.
Right.
If anything else is done, that is not part of what we're doing tonight. I mean, either we, I mean, or continue it down the road again.
Right.
But the actual issue itself is either yes or no.
That's correct, yeah.
I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
Further questions?
Close public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Council, what do you want to do with zoning map amendment 2207?
Your Honor, I move that we uphold the pending board's decision to deny the request of zoning map amendment 2207 with the adopted inconsistency statement.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Mr. King. I appreciate you.
Y'all should read your emails.
Moving on to number five, the APD Annual Report 2021, Chief.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Mayor, City Manager. Before you, I dropped off a package of the Almaral Police Department's annual police report from 2021. It's also attached to the APD's webpage. And with that, we're going to go through a couple of the highlights.
Speak into the mic there, Chief.
We're going to go through a couple of the highlights here in the report. We're going to cover some crime statistics and some of the issues and problems we've seen. And then we put out a community survey as well. We're going to cover some of that material, trying to paint a picture of what the police department has done in 2021, where we're at in 2022, and where we're going to be going. And Assistant Chief Cranford is here with me to share that conversation.
Summary of events or community involvement for 2021. We did Easter basket giveaway, Easter of the year last year. Several programs to include Central Elementary School's criminal investigation process forum. Hosted a junior police academy last year. Held a community night out event, which is also planned for this year as well. Engaged with the community with trick or treat at the PD, which was like a trunk or treat. They could come by the police department, hand out candy, and meet the kids, and we did it out front. Participated in downtown Christmas parade and hosted with the fire department holiday heroes. Those are just a short summary of the events. If you look through the annual report, you can actually see they're itemized from month to month, from January to December. Staffing highlights, for the first time for the department, we hired BLAT students as police cadets, which included covering tuition and sending them to class to become police officers in the state of North Carolina. Teamwork and collaborative effort by all employees to make this happen. APD saw structural changes last year and also position opportunities. We transitioned this period through new leadership, which also includes our new police chief and several other staff members. Now we're going to talk about some uniform crime report statistics. I'm going to let the chief take over.
Looking at the data and in the agenda as well, there's specific packets of information from both North Carolina, and we have our stats in the annual report. Some of the key points I want to make. Almaral, for a community with the population just under seventeen thousand, I will say that if you look at the North Carolina Crime Index, we're pretty high in comparison with the rest of the state. So it's very important as a police department that we get a grip to understand what's causing our crime, understand some of the factors, and be proactive versus reactive with it. And to include our strategies, we definitely need the input of the community to have a positive effect on that. We have to form a collaboration with the community for information purposes and for crime strategies for problem solving. So with that, I want to touch base on the homicide rate. One positive note here, it has decreased from 2020 to 2021 by fifty percent. And with that, aggravated assaults have dropped fifty-one percent. And that's the key point, because if you listen to the media across the nation, you're going to hear that violence has increased. So while it has maybe nationally, here in Almaral, we've actually had a pretty significant impact specifically on aggravated assaults. So I'm happy with those reports. Significant decrease in burglaries as well by thirty-two percent and motor vehicle theft by twenty-seven percent. And a total reduction in violent crime of forty percent and the property crime of nearly fourteen percent for the year. And I will tell you, the crime index, they look at all crimes across the Unified Crime Report Index. And that goes by what we submit in police reports by offenses. And with that, you know, we submit the information, the state of North Carolina and the FBI correlate those UCR numbers and report the indexes. So with that, what drives the majority of the crime here at Almaral tends to lean heavily on larcenies and property crime. So with that, if looking at the crime index report from North Carolina, they just give us the index rate for the state from 2020. They haven't got all the data in to formulate the 2021 report on that. But we can look at Almaral's rate at 2020 and compare it to the state's rate. Though we've dropped in 2021, our total crime of 5,5353 in comparison to the 2775 for North Carolina, we're still pretty high. We're hoping to have major impacts on that over the upcoming six months for the remainder of this year, and then form more strategies to continue to combat those crimes in 2023. Violent crime, we're not doing too bad there. You'll see that we dropped from nine hundred and five point two down to five hundred and thirty-five point four. The national average in North Carolina is four hundred and fifty-one point six. So we're almost there. Property crime, as you see, is twenty-three, twenty-four for the state, and we're sitting right now at forty-eight, eighteen in 2021. In 2020, we're at five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five. So we do have that reduction. We're still well above the state average. So looking at the data from 2020 to 2021, you know, we'd need to reduce the crime by forty-four percent in the remainder of this year to reach just the crime rate index of the average for the state in 2020. And that's not looking at what the data is going to show us for 2021. But that's a goal that we can set for ourselves as we finish up the next six months. Again, here's some comparisons of the 2020 index for the state versus what we need to do in 2021 just to meet and attain that. So far, on homicide and rape, we're leveled out at zero percent. And these are year-to-date numbers for 2021. They were effective up until June, of the end of June of 2021. Robbery and aggravated assaults, we're doing pretty well there. We're down fifty-eight percent on robberies and negative fourteen percent on aggravated assaults. So we're kind of on track to at least come pretty close to those numbers. And then property crimes, this is where a challenge is at. Burglary, we're doing pretty well there. Larceny, we've seen a significant decrease in 2021 from 2022. We're down thirty-nine percent year-to-date. So that is significant, but we've got to keep a very close eye on that, what's causing it. And motor vehicle thefts, as you'll see, they're down as well. Twenty-six percent decrease from 2021 year-to-date to the end of June here with a negative thirty-eight percent decrease in that. And I will tell you, the larcenies, a lot of it, we've dug into the numbers, having a Walmart here in the city where they have a very proactive loss prevention unit within their system. I think JT told me today that they were number one in the state for loss prevention, and they got some pretty good recognition for that. So the fact that they take that matter seriously and they're handling business within and reporting and aggressively, you know, taking those individuals that are stealing things to court and following through with that, that's a very critical thing. But that does drive our numbers up, but that's okay. Because we're just, Walmart's saying that they're not going to tolerate theft at that property, and we're going to do what we can to help them. So as we look forward for the remainder of 2022 and into 2023, we're going to look at what we need to do to attain our goals of crime reduction, specifically violent crime. And we need the continued support from the community. With that, we're going to try to enhance our engagement activities and make sure we have good, effective communication to and from the public, to the police department. And with that, for the viewers out there, please, if you have any issues, I know you hear this, but if you see something, say something. And I know I get messages from council, from the city manager's office, and from the mayor about issues ranging from traffic problems to drug issues that are in the community. Really, please, contact us directly. That way, we get that information as soon as it becomes identified as a problem, and we can react to it and become proactive instead of maybe we get the information a week later and have to do some digging and do some intel work. We can jump on it immediately. So with some of the notes here, you know, looking at what crime and those that are preying on crime, part of the proactive is to identify some of the perpetrators and putting a program together and a strategy that we can go out into the community, engage in conversations with some of our known offenders. And we can't arrest our way out of all the problems, but maybe we could work with them and find other needs or angles of opportunities for what is their problem? Why do they keep continuing with their crime patterns and the problems? And see if there's an alternative method to that. So we could work with the community and other city departments to work on that end. Another factor, getting out into the community and having our officers engage on the community-oriented problem-solving policing. That's going to be the root of our strategy, because again, we can't do this alone. We need the community with us, working as a team. All right, we sent out a survey. It was imperative while we're putting together the strategies to find out exactly what the community needs. You should have the reports, thirty-some page report in your packet as well. We sent out thirty-one questions on the webpage. David Pfath worked with us with the PIO's office, and he sent out the questions and got the response and tabulated all the information into the data we have. But a lot of the questions related to how satisfied are the citizens with the police, with the police actions, and as they relate to crime and any community interaction and problem solving. So some of the work that was done with community communications interaction, also any crime concerns. And with crime concerns specifically, there is a, I want to say probably twenty or thirty items listed. The number one reported issue by far was drug abuse and drug problems. Number two was homelessness and problems created by the homelessness. And number three, they were neck and neck with each other, were burglary and traffic. So some of the other positive comments that were in the report, and this report is also on the APD's webpage. Daytime safety, everybody pretty much felt safe during the day. Fair, respectful policing, and a high level of trust. There are some opportunities, though, for the police department to get out into the public. Some of the examples I've mentioned with the staff is creating some town hall meetings, different segments of the community. We can move around, do coffee with the cop, and just engage the public where they are, and they can have conversations with us. And we can present data, provide information, and then listen to their needs and any of their concerns and work together to solve the problems.
Chief, can you mention that? We should have had that survey within our packet.
In your agenda.
Oh, I saw it on the agenda, but he mentioned that it was in the packet. And I just, I mean, it's in the departmental report, I believe. Okay, just want to make sure I wasn't missing something. I've seen it in departmental.
The next step then, after we got the feedback from the community, I want to engage, and I've already mentioned in staff meetings and with staff, that I'm going to send out a questionnaire just internal to find out how the employees view the police department currently, all the way from leadership, communication, accountability, morale, engagement, and performance. And it's a very open survey. We're going to talk with everyone and let them know that this is a nominus if they want it that way. But I tell them, if you have anything to tell me, you can come tell me. I don't, there's going to be no recourse. We're all working together for the same product here, and that's a safe environment for the community. So anything that we can do better, we need that information. And again, going into 2023, we're going to come up with strategies. I've got a series of goals that we've talked over. The Assistant Chief and I spent a lot of time discussing these. We've talked with the captains and staff, sergeant supervision, down at the line level, the detectives, the civilian staff. We're all working together to engage with the community, to come up with a crime-fighting strategy to provoke a safe and harmonious community and affect problems with traffic. I know that's a big issue as well. We get a lot of phone calls about traffic concerns, and some of the road work that's out there does give us some issues with fears of major traffic crashes and the potential for deaths or other serious injuries related to that. So we're talking through that with the staff and kind of different strategies as we go into 2023.
Staff, any questions?
Staff or council?
Excuse me, without any questions.
I do three questions. And since you went into 2022, even though this was calendar year 2021, two of the questions have to do with 2022. When and where, you mentioned National Night Out.
It's going to be October 15th at the YMCA.
At the YMCA Park.
Four P.M., four P.M. December.
October 15th.
Yes, ma'am.
Because National Night Out, the National Night Out, I think, is the first, isn't it, this week? It's the first, it's this Thursday, isn't it? The first Thursday in August. Traditionally, I understand why. And this is for calendar year 2021. Why is it that we're just getting this now? I'm just asking that, because this is August, the first meeting in August. I mean, is there a reason why we're just now getting it? I don't know.
We got the report, we started working on it back in April through printing, and we kind of reworked the whole report. When it came out, we had it probably by the end of May, early June with the council agendas, working with a good strategy of when to present it. And quite frankly, I figured it can lay right into July, August with the fiscal year, just kind of showing a trajectory of where we were and then where we're going to go with this upcoming fiscal year as well. But in the future, I plan on having that out in April.
Good, good, thank you. And currently, are we still taking applications?
Absolutely, we just onboarded five today, met with them. Assistant Chief Cranford has met that goal, and we've got another goal to get five. We are sending these five to Rowan. They've got an academy starting next Monday. And then Stanley County Community College is going to have their session open. College is going to have their session open. We don't have a date from them currently, but as soon as September 7th. And we plan on having five more in there. Right now, I know we've got four locked in with a potential for one more with a little bit more paperwork. So that'd give us 10 in the academy.
Because I understand that we're losing folks right and left, and it's just, I'm wondering if we've got more in the...
Right. Now, I will say that though it appears that way, we're only down one more with the folks that have left over the last 12 months. So we're only down one. We haven't lost that much. Thank you, ma'am.
Chief, I'm looking at the stats on the seizures and arrests from the narcotics. Is it pretty much a statewide trend, the big significance in heroin and fentanyl compared to the cocaine and marijuana? It looks like we, wow, we four or five times higher on heroin and fentanyl. Is that pretty much a statewide trend?
It's probably a national trend as well. Unfortunately, what nationally, with the overdose rate, it's all tracked right back to fentanyl. Drug sales are finding, if they lace the product and they have a more potent product, their sales increase. So unfortunately, they're lacing everything with fentanyl.
Counsel, further questions? Comments? Chief? Assistant Chief, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Number six, your chart metal monthly reports is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, just one note, observation. I still don't see the report from Waste Management in there, you know, just pointing that out for the record.
I have a couple, and I just would like to reiterate some things that are in the report. And since folks in the, that get this, they may not look through everything that we end up reading. I just would say, out of the way to ADDC, getting the fans in there, down at the market station. I go down there regularly, and it sure is like a breath of fresh air, no pun intended, to have those fans down there. Folks are thrilled to death to have them down there. The financial report, I see the little footnote that this is, you always put what month we are of the 12 months. I'm sure that these numbers will change, Jake. Just, they will change a little bit, but we look at, that is the end of fiscal year. I was glad to see that we hired three new firefighters. Chief here?
He's not with us.
Is there anyone from the fire department here? So, Michael, it looks like to me that we started three new today, and that they started some of their training today. Is that right?
I can't speak to the training part, but yes, on board today.
Well, EMT class, well, maybe EMT class 8-2. That my assumption would be is they came on and they're starting tomorrow.
Are we fully staffed in the fire department, Michael, do you know, with these three new ones? Does that bring us to a full?
I think there's one more, and I think that fourth has been identified. So it may not be in this, just recently, so it may not be in that batch, but that will bring it back with the additional three that were the new positions that were also added back toward the end of last fiscal year.
And I don't see Dr. Scott here, but then I might not be able to see all the way back to the back. Is he back there?
No.
And I may just throw this out to you. I've just got some questions about his report that I've not seen before about how many we have open, but we'll look at that.
Okay.
Empty units.
Say further on the report. Your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have a question on that? We'll move on to consider agenda. Number eight, consider road closure for Big Truck Day, and I will remind everyone that is this coming Saturday in front of the Stanley County Museum, when they have the ribbon cutting for the Smithsonian display. Number nine, consider road closure for the Torrey Elvis 5K. Number 10, consider road closure for the Piper 5K. And number 11, consider approval of a sole source purchase.
I just want more, I know we got an email and some discussion, some explanation of what the sole source purchase is, but I would like to have a little bit more explanation of that just moving forward. So we can either pull it. So, Michael, you can help me understand that, because it's a little bit different from what we've done in the past, is it not?
Yes, we'll be making some changes moving forward. So there, what we're going to do is probably take a little bit more strict interpretation of what the intent of the statute is. So you'll probably be seeing a few more of these things for new sole source. That won't change. But this is probably a good example. What you have before you tonight is the Posi Show, which is the daily covering with the landfill. It's something we have been using before. But again, in trying to make sure we are in compliance with the statute, it's not that we weren't before, but just want to make sure that we're also following the intention and intent of the statute. This is something that we purchased for years, but it's now coming to you as a sole source, because this is, I think, a proprietary trademark product. And Ross Bubworth, director, is shaking his head. So it's not a new product. We're just trying to make sure we cover our bases and do what we need to do to make sure we're compliant with the intent of the law as well. So that's why you're seeing that. If that answers your question.
Yes, it does.
Are you still wanting that four from the consent agenda or included?
He's answering my question.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second, by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12, Resolution 2227, consider adoption of public records request policy. I will ask Ms. Birch to make her presentation, then I have an unannounced delegation that wants to make some comments on.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you today is the public records policy and procedure.
Can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Let me move this closer, if you can come closer. Can you hear me? Is that better? Okay. Before you tonight is the public records policy and procedure document. I would like to preface this with saying that the majority of the procedure mentioned in this policy has actually been happening. We're just trying to reduce something to writing, to promote public transparency, and letting potential requesters know what they can expect when submitting a public records request. So in this policy, obviously, the purpose is to, you know, kind of measure everyone's expectations when they submit a public records request to the city of Albemarle. And in this policy, you will see, which hasn't been done before, the levying of a reasonable service charge for those requests that are deemed to be extensive and require a lot of staff time for compilation. And in this, we'll go into a little more detail about what extensive means. Here you have just a general definition of what public records are, and just an overview is pretty much all documents or photographs, films, letters, papers that are documented in the course of transaction of city business or municipal business. All of these are subject to public records requests and kind of public access unless there is a statutory exclusion, which there are some listed at the end of this policy. The list isn't exhaustive, but we have the most prominent exclusions mentioned in this policy. So moving down to the procedure, just wanted to let the public know that all the requests are to be submitted to the city clerk, and that can be done in person via phone. Or we have recently created a new central mailbox, public records request@albemarlenc.gov. And this will be on display and put on the website just for public education. Also, the clerk will acknowledge receipt of the records within a reasonable time once she receives them and forward that request to other people that may need to be aware. Traditionally, this works. We get a records request, and we will send it to the department of whose records they're requesting. Obviously, the administration department doesn't have every email just on hand or, you know, all readily information available when records requests come in. So if there's something, I think the example was in here, if they're requesting something related to salary benefits, that'll go to the HR director. So we just farm them out based on what the topic of those records requests are. The department director, or they can delegate this to another staff member to promote efficiency, will then compile those records and send them to the city clerk. What typically happens is, we'll take a look at them. If there's any information that's deemed to be non-public or confidential, that's when my services are used to do the redaction and compiling and extracting that confidential information before the records request is produced. So once the records are compiled, any redaction or elimination of non-public information is done, the city clerk will then provide a response to the requester. And you see some potential responses here, providing the entire record, if all of it's public, providing a partial, or outlining the reasons why only a partial record is produced. As you will see later, there's an option for providing a cost estimate and payment request for special service charges for those extensive requests, which we'll go into in a little more detail. And then the last option is simply denying the request, and we'll state the reasons as to why. And that's typically because it either doesn't exist or it's non-public or confidential. So something new that we're going to start incorporating if council wishes to proceed with this policy are a few fees for public records production. These fees are not meant to be punitive. We obviously want to promote the sharing of government information. However, we also need to balance that with staff time and resources, just so we are able to recoup our costs. So the first of which are printed copies. We don't get many requests for printed copies, but we want it to at least charge a fee comparable with our cost is. And so that's pretty nominal, 10 cents per page, 15 cents if it's double-sided. If it's mailed, the cost of postage will be on the Requester to pay. The first 10 printed pages are provided at no cost, and that's to help people that just need a couple, you know, pages of information. We don't want to kind of nickel-and-dime everyone. So the first 10 pages are produced at no cost. And then if there is something that is pretty expensive and requires a lot to print, we'll say, you know, fees that are anticipated to be over $50 are required to be prepaid. Fees under that, they can just come and pay when they receive the material. And then lastly, if folks don't want to email or kind of mail copies, they can come and inspect the records in person. We just ask that there is a prior appointment with the city clerk before doing that, so she can make sure that the material is available prior to them coming. And obviously, that inspection would occur during normal business hours. And so one of the final things we have here is a special service charge, and this is authorized by statute. In compiling this research, I forgot to mention, the city clerk and I went to other municipalities and counties just to see what their policies are. There's not much wiggle room when it comes to what we can do. The statute definitely defines and constrains us into what we can do as far as service charges and fees. So you will find that across municipalities and other local governments, it's pretty consistent. There's not much wiggle room as to what a public records is, or, you know, the special service charge is specifically authorized by statute. And the four hours that you'll see here is consistent across municipalities. That four-hour threshold simply means that once the request is taken more than half of a workday to compile, that crosses it into the territory of being something that's deemed to be extensive, for which we can implement the special service charge. And so here you will see, if a request takes more than four hours to complete, the city can charge a reasonable fee, and that fee is $28 per hour, but that's only charged in excess of the initial four hours. And I know there's a slight typo here. We'll get that fixed before we put it on the website for public viewing. So in essence, the public will get the first four hours of kind of compiling resources and gathering the documentation requested for free. But then after that, each additional hour will be charged at kind of the 28 per hour, $28 per hour rate. Prior to fulfilling the request, a cost estimate will be provided to the Requester. And this hourly rate mainly comes into play when there are a lot of emails that are requested. And so here, under there, you'll see a formula for calculating how we kind of anticipate how much time we're going to spend on records requests. So you'll see the formula. We're going to calculate about 15 seconds per email, and that includes downloading from the server, things the IS has to do, compiling. So it's actually very generous. It takes us more than 15 seconds to do all this, but obviously, we don't want the policy to be punitive, and we want to give everyone the opportunity to get the information that they're seeking. So 15 seconds per email, and we'll time that by the number of emails and divide that by 3,600. 3,600 is the number of seconds in an hour, and that'll give us the estimated hours for completion. And so as you'll scroll down, I just tried to include a little example. If someone requested about 500 emails, we're going to estimate that that takes about 2.08 hours. So even under our policy, someone can request 1,000 emails without a fee. So it's pretty generous. And so that is the formula for record production. So we want to attach the $28 hour and a rate to just general records request of compiling records. We're going to ask the staff that are in charge of compiling those records to document their time in doing so. So it'll be documented in 15-minute increments, and that's for searching, located, collecting, sorting, copying. Most of this, I would say, comes in the email format. We typically, or traditionally, haven't received a bunch of public records requests asking for things outside of electronic communication. So this portion, I think, heavily involves the IS department more than any, any other department. So I just wanted, I think the last thing, item C, even though that we, we're going to charge this hourly rate, is only for kind of the collecting, sorting, copying, and preparing the records to be produced. We can't charge a fee for the time that it takes me to sort the information, so to exclude the non-public from the public. So my time is not allocated in this. That is just something that the municipality has to absorb, and that's by statute. So the only thing that the requesters will be charged for are kind of staff's time in compiling the emails, mainly IS. It's kind of the most prominent department. That's traditionally what's going to be calculated for, not necessarily my time in the redaction and kind of recompiling of that information. And so the last section is just a general synopsis of things that are exempt from public access. Obviously, this list is not exhaustive. It's just simply the things that we encounter the most. So public personnel records are exempt except for those items that are listed in the general statute names, salary, date of hire, criminal investigation records, tax records containing taxpayers' income or receipts, public enterprise billing information, economic development information that's made not, until it's made public, and minutes of closed session meetings, just generally. But there are some other circumstances in which that the records wouldn't be able to be produced. So I know that's kind of a high-level overview, but I just wanted to present that to council tonight. And if you all have any questions, I'm prepared to answer those as well.
That's pretty consistent with what council adopted many years ago for the copies. You're basically adding the digital charges now. The other's pretty consistent with what council has done in the past. Actually, it's a little bit more generous. The other was five copies free, and yours is 10. So I think, I think that's fair, in my opinion. Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Birch?
Having read it within the body of the agenda, and then having it read, something hit me, and I'm sure we've always had it this way. But what, allowing someone to make a phone call and request them, it looks like to me that you would want that, that kind of information request in writing somehow.
So the statute says that public requesters can submit a request in any format. As a municipality, we're legally not authorized to ask someone to do these things to writing. So we just, that's, I think, just an intent to be, you know, inclusive of people that may not have the ability to submit something formal, but just want to call up. Obviously, when they call, we would request to have something, you know, more certain in writing, just so we have something to rely on, and there's no ambiguity or confusion. But if they push back and say no, they simply want to give it verbally, we have to accept that.
But you, but you would ask for some of that?
We would ask.
I just, I guess it's where I came from. I guess it's like, wait a minute, I can't believe they're still doing.
And most people do submit them via email. We don't have many walk-ins or calls for public records. Most people want to deduce it to writing, so they have a kind of a documentation of when they send it and how long it is taking to produce. So that's a pretty rare occurrence, but we will accept them if they come that way.
From a record retention standpoint, do the North Carolina General Statute stipulate how far like a request can go back? Say like, somebody requesting information, they wouldn't expect us to go back 10 or 15 years ago?
So the records retention policy has a schedule, and for each category, it'll list how long we are required to retain those records. So it really depends on what comes before us. Obviously, if you want to know how many employees the city has, that's pretty immediate. You're kind of delineating the timeframe when you request it. If you want to request something back from 1990, we'll just have to research what it is and if it's even still in our records. So it's on a case-by-case basis, depending on the topic. But there is a retention schedule that dictates how long we have to maintain records. But there is a retention schedule that dictates how long we have to maintain records.
Further questions, council? Okay, I have one speaker. Jake Fur, twelve forty-seven Salisbury Avenue, Albemarle, wishes to speak on this item.
Mayor, council? You have to apologize, I just saw this this morning. But my issues with this, and I want to thank staff for actually going above and beyond to put a policy in place, because there needs to be one. But my issues are the numbers, the twenty-eight dollars an hour over four, and the fifteen seconds an email. Okay. Currently, you may or may not know, I have a public records request that generated twelve thousand, four hundred and four emails. Who knows what you're, are you being charged on what's generated? Are you being charged on what the city allows you to see? Mine's not going to fall under that category, because it was issued before you adopt whatever policy this is. But this policy actually seems to be a deterrent for people wanting to make public records requests, because there's no stipulation on, how do I know how much time they spent? Yeah, they're supposed to document every fifteen minutes, but is that put into the city's payroll system? Is that in munis, cronus, whatever we use? Are they entering that in? So, if that's actually a public request, are they just writing it down? You don't know. Do I even know that there were really twelve thousand, four hundred and four emails? Maybe there were only five. Yeah. I think the question that, for the public, is how do you know what was produced? And how do you know exactly what time? And then, that actually adds into more public records requests, a records request for the hours spent. But those are my concerns with this policy. And the frivolous, frivolous request that it could cause. I mean, my email's not, my request is not frivolous, but what's to stop me from requesting every email of anybody in the city, of the entire city? If it's not personal information, they have to abide by it. And then, her going, or whoever does it, says there's, the city says there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand emails that we have sourced and went through, and I go, yeah, no, I don't want them, and just walk away from it. There has to be some accounting, and that is not in this policy. So, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Birch, you want to say anything?
So, I will just add a couple of points of clarification. So, it very well may be the instance that, let's just say, a records request produces five thousand emails. By the time you go through the process of redaction and taking out things that aren't public, it is very well likely that you won't receive five thousand. And so, I guess to address Mr. First's concern, it's basically the honor system here, and I don't think that we have staff here that would intentionally overbill public Requestors or exaggerate the amount of hours that they spent on a public records request. Everyone here is honest. And so, the amount of time billed will be the amount of time spent. And the statute actually requires that you cannot overbill for additional costs that weren't contemplated when the request was submitted. So, we can't pad the payment for records requests. And honestly, our policy is very generous to allocate fifteen seconds to, for each email, for collecting, sorting, downloading from the server takes more than fifteen seconds. So, it's pretty generous, and it's kind of an underpayment, honestly, when you do the math on it. So, if council's open to the public records request, I would just ask you to approve the Resolution twenty-two twenty-seven.
And you did the research, making it fairly consistent with the other six.
We are, four hours is the threshold. It's pretty standard. UNC has a model template for records requests and what that threshold into extensive requests is, and it's consistent with the four hours. The hourly rate is variable, but we attach the hourly rate to a city employee just so we're not picking something out of the air.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, what you want to do with Resolution twenty-two twenty-seven?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number thirteen, City of Albemarle Historic Marker Program. Think staff's going to introduce this.
Thank you, mayor. If you remember, I sent an email to council a few months back. It might have been in March, where we were looking at the possibility of putting some highway markers at a couple of locations downtown, specifically Starnes is one of the locations we were looking at, Starnes Jewelers. We did look into that, and the Highway Marker Program apparently is not something that we were eligible for there, and they are rather costly to do on our own. So, Brittany looked into some other options, and she's put together a program. She's going to present that to y'all tonight.
Hi, council, mayor. Thank you for having me today. So, you have in your packet a one-pager I prepared on this program. With the blessing of council tonight, we would like to go forward and present it to community partners and begin.
We don't have anything in our packet. There were no attachments. I don't.
There's nothing on the agenda.
No, that's okay. Whenever she said that, I said.
He was working hard on vacation, so apologies for that. Well, as Kevin said, we were looking into highway markers and found out that they, we weren't eligible for any, but we wanted to start a local marker program to know all the history in Albemarle specifically. In searching what we could do, we decided to search for cost-effective options as the cast-iron plaques for the highway markers are very expensive. And with COVID producing shortage of that material, they're also behind about six months to a year in actually producing those markers. So, we researched and decided to go with street markers affixed to poles that would sort of stand out from our traditional traffic markers, produced by the same company. These signs cost about fifty dollars to produce, are easily customizable, they're reflective, and can pretty much house any information that we want. So, we went down the route of where to begin with this program, and we decided to focus on the historic downtown and specifically on the historic walking tour to engage people in downtown. And we thought it'd be with the launch of the social district, engaging people that will be out on the streets already. We have identified ten locations for historic markers that are on the walking tour that you don't have in front of you. And we produced a sample. I want to share it, but I want to say that the sample is not what we're going for. The background came out very dark, the reflective stickers are a little pungent, but we wanted you to kind of get something to hold and feel, so I'll pass it around while I share the location. Okay. So, some of the locations that we're thinking of are things like the Alameda Theater, the Albemarle Hotel, the Ogden and Elizabeth House, Isaiah and Ellen Snugg's House, and then Starnes Jewelers. We also want to note historical properties that are no longer there. So, we would note the location of Courtyard, Courthouse Square Park and the buildings that used to be there. We would note where the Merrill Lee's Hotel sat on North Second Street. We would note the first courthouse in Albemarle across from Courthouse Square. And you can see on the sign right there, we're showing an image of what that looked like at that time with a short detail of the history there, any architectural details that are noted. And then, there's a QR code. The QR code is to help us track engagement and to bring people back to the historic walking tour. Here are other sites you can see. Here's the history of Albemarle. Here's how you can keep engaging with us. We discussed with David Thad, the Public Information Officer, how we could launch this program and how we could get the community engaged. And we've talked about engaging people in social media leading up to the launch to say, you know, where is this? And doing maybe close-up shots of the building and saying, guess where this is? Guess where we are? Guess the history? Getting them involved that way, announcing the launch, and then potentially working with partners to do a scavenger hunt of some kind, using the QR codes and engaging with these markers. And if all goes well, we would love to expand more markers throughout the city and throughout downtown in Phase Two, which I will leave y'all on a cliffhanger for. Are there any questions, or can I share more?
Do you have more, or you asking for questions before you go further? What do you have?
I'm done.
Okay. I actually liked the sign. It looks good. But how are you going to, what do you fix it to? Street poles or?
Yes.
Existing light poles?
Yes. Existing light poles under current signage. We would find the best location kind of nearest the building and/or demolished building that we're referring to.
This is the actual size?
That is the size. We thought it was a good size to differentiate between the standard traffic sign, which is about a twelve-by-eighteen, and this is a twelve-by-twelve square. So, it should sort of stand out.
That's actually what I like about it, it's not huge and.
Yeah. It's not huge, mostly the death scale.
Yeah, it is walking.
Will it be, like, streets this way will be perpendicular to the street? Or this, like, you're walking down?
If it's walking, you probably would do it on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
That was my question, were you going to do one on each side? So, yeah, I think, I think two-sided, you would need to do. And I like the idea of not adding any more poles. I just didn't want to clutter the sidewalk anymore.
No more poles.
And you have the funds to purchase?
Well, I think we had probably almost the funds to do ten of them, if you're double-sided, I'm not going to talk.
Council, what's your thoughts?
I like it. I may have you some money. I may have you some money right here, something I'm going to talk about in a minute.
I'll entertain a motion if council wants to proceed with this. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
That's the last one I'll vote for. When I was coming in town today, I thought, I can't even read all these things.
You have to be walking to read this one, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. Number fourteen, Discussion of the Grand Marshal for the Christmas Parade. Ms. Holland, are you handling that one?
Well, I, well, Lisa's here, and we'll just, I don't mind saying it, or Lisa can come up. At the Special Events Meeting, must have been three weeks ago, whenever it was, two weeks ago. It was the third Wednesday in July, whenever that was. There was some discussion about the Grand Marshal, and we were trying to be proactive in so much as to not wait till the last minute to find us one and those kinds of things, thus the reason we already have a date and all that kind of thing scheduled. There was some discussion that, instead of just throwing names out there like we've done in the past about who was going to be Grand Marshal, and the committee made the decision, the Special Events Committee wants to be able to allow the community to nominate folks and then have some type of, in a, some type of time with a deadline, be able, folks to be able to vote for them online. And I just, I mean, I like it, but I didn't want it to be something that was given to us as council and somebody not like it up here. So, I wanted to make sure that if we were giving this to the Special Events Committee, that we were giving it to them to do, and if not, we need to make that decision now. So, I wanted you all to know about it, and I'm good with it, but if somebody is not good with it, we need to talk about it now.
I think letting not get nominations is great. I don't want to put something on staff that's awful cumbersome. How do you feel about the vote, Ms. Kaiser? Or would you rather the committee make the decision with the nomination, after they get the nomination?
To let the, let the community still vote on it.
Council, good with that?
Like, if you get five or six names, narrow it down to two or three or something?
Or you just might vote them off.
Or would you throw everybody? I don't know, what if you get a lot of names?
We don't really.
Okay, all right. Then it gets. There you go. All right, good deal.
Thank you.
Is there any criteria associated with this, or just popularity contest of people nominating? My point is going to the opposite end of where, and folks listening, I don't mean to offend anybody. We don't want, there's, there's good, bad, and indifferent, and I don't want somebody in there that somebody throws in at the last moment and, you know, you understand what I'm saying? I don't want some doodly-dad sitting in there at the front car and laughing at everything that's going to happen from there on out. Maybe I'm over-exaggerating, but things like that have happened.
The vote should be a suggestion, and the committee make the final decision. That sound good?
Well, to your question, Councilmember Dry, there will be criteria. There are other communities around the state that do this same thing, so we'll adopt and change to meet our needs. And we will vet all the nominations as well, so.
How long would it take you to put that out there?
The goal would be to have the nominations out, maybe from August fifteenth through the middle of September, and then voting the last of September through the middle of October. And that way, we have that person, and that way, we can really do the promotion of the parade with the Grand Marshal already, yeah, chosen.
Thank you, Lisa. And I will just say that the Special Events Committee in the past three that I remember, I don't, I can't really go back further than that. The past three, if you all remember, I think Troy was one one year, and, yeah, all of our pediatric cancer children were, and then Nia's dad. You know, I think we've had some great ones, and I'm hoping that that's the kind of folks that will be nominated for such. But thank, thank you. She does a dang good job, guys, on that, chairing that Special Events Committee.
Thank you, Lisa. Coming around the table. Ms. Louder, you have anything? Ms. Hughes?
Do we know Michael Wynn, the social district? I know she said no later than August thirty-third. Do you know any other? I think Joy left.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I'll try to find out.
People are asking, when's it going to start? Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Townsend?
Uh, two quick things. One, do we have any information on, is anybody, has anybody been awarded the tag renewal offer yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, I have a lot of people asking about that.
I was actually with Wayne Goodwin about three weeks ago and asked him then, and he did not have an answer then. So, I mean, that was, and I was face-to-face with him and asking.
Okay. And last but not least, I think staff had done a good job putting before, some months back, the Walk of Fame Committee Policy Recommendations and stuff of that nature for us to bring candidates to serve on that committee. Not sure how many more members we, or nominees that we looking for, but I would hope that council can move forward with that at the next meeting. I would say if we don't have any additional nominees, let's move forward with what we got. And even if a council member got to fill in the gap for the remaining spots, I think we need, we've been dragging, kicking that can down the road long enough, you know?
I haven't heard from the one that you recommended. I dropped off a paperwork, but I haven't heard any more.
Well, that, now, just for the record, I did, I turned in one application for one gentleman, and then we talked to another lady serving.
I haven't heard anything back from her.
Okay.
I haven't heard back from mine yet either. I'll follow back up.
Okay. So, but that's it.
Ms. Fair?
Uh, nothing to add.
Mr. Townsend got a call about our Fab Forty sign that we do for the Bulldog Booster Club. It's time to renew that, if council wishes to renew that again. Remind council, it's a thousand-dollar program where we, we do three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. We split in thirds, and we pay. We split in thirds and we pay that every year for three years. It comes out, if everybody participates in it, it's forty-two dollars a piece. Counsel, what's your wishes on doing that again?
And we do this individually.
It's individually. City does not pay it. It comes out of your own checking account.
I'm good with it. I also do one myself.
I'm good with it.
So everybody good? Ms. Louder? Ms. Louder, you good? It's the program where we have the sign on the board at the high school and we pay forty-two dollars each per year to keep it up there. Yes, ma'am.
When you pull, when you pull into the parking lot, the first thing you see is the board up there, the Fabulous Forty. Actually started in nineteen ninety-two uh with Jack Gaster, Roger Hudson, and myself. And uh, it has been a, an outstanding program to bring funds in, to buy stuff needed for the football program, uh primarily. There's, and talking with some people today, there's so much that these kids really appreciate when they do get some new equipment, not some, you know, hand me down stuff that had been around for years. Uh, also updating the weight room. Uh, there's just a lot of things that's there. It's a great program. And uh, I, I wish more people would participate in it. Over the years, it's been to where you couldn't even get on the board. Uh, now there are more spaces uh than I would like to see. But again, it's supporting Albemarle High School, supporting our student athletes, and giving them the best opportunity with equipment and otherwise to be successful as student athletes.
Only thing we, we do at, at elementary schools and the middle schools is a bear program where the city pays half of that.
And we also go into those schools with um Public Power Week.
Right.
Public Power Week to do presentations.
Alright, uh, Ms. Hall.
So we're going to do that.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so in just reading thousands of emails that come every week, um and Elect, Electricity's email became very interesting to me about down, their downtown revitalization grants that they have. And Smart Communities Grants and Smart Sites Grants. And uh, that, I don't know that we've ever done it and we may have, but if we haven't, um, that downtown revitalization grant's ten thousand dollars. And I first thought about Ross, I thought about the alleyway and thought about what ten thousand dollars might help us do down there. So I don't know any more than that, but I've, I'm, saw that on, and I'm thinking that sounds like something that we ought to be able to address. Now, uh, on that same vein, Electricity's has helped us, um, did two years ago and maybe even this year, um, with our Food Truck Fridays. Uh, and that is this Friday night um at um City Lake Park. I've, oh, is Dave, is David here?
He's in the back.
Okay, see, I can't see him. Okay, very good. There has been communication on e, email, not email communication, but um on Facebook about, and I may have this pronunciation, Derek Dexter, wrong. Is it Louis Cato? Is that his name?
I know Louis Cato.
That's a music person?
Okay, yeah, that's like.
Is that the same guy?
Yeah.
So there's, um, I think Martha and I maybe were tagged in um at a Facebook post last week. There are folks that, that he's doing something really big now on something, some late night television every night, like every night.
I hadn't seen that.
Well, it was just something on Facebook and, and we were tagged about that we need to recognize him. So David, between you and I, you may just go back and look and see if you can find that. Um, he, I, I don't know how old a man he is, but supposedly he is working on late night television, doing some kind of music stuff. I don't know, but that was out there. Um, and just a question. At one point in time, Grace Place, and this may be a Kevin issue. Grace Place over at um on Church Street was, do you remember there was a Methodist church that, okay? What's going on with that right now?
I don't know.
It's in what way? I mean, is it, are they just, are they feeding folks there?
That's the last thing I knew. They were still feeding those folks and the church, there's a church upstairs.
There, the church is upstairs. Well, somebody asked me at, down at um Farmer's Market on Saturday, what was going on there. And I couldn't, I knew we had done something or something was going on, but I could not answer that, so. Um, and that's it.
Mr. Whitley?
I'll pass.
Mr. Dry?
Um, again, to the Police Department Chief, Assistant Chief, great job. Uh, short time period here, a lot of things accomplished and I hope we can continue to, to do that. I'm sure we will. Also, out to plan, and you guys don't always get a pat on the back for what you do, but you provide us with a lot of good information to make good decisions uh that benefit uh our, our citizens. And I, I appreciate it. Um, our staff doesn't always get the pats on the back that, that they deserve. And I, I know I speak for my compadres here that we appreciate what you do. And sorry, sorry you get some negative feedback every once in a while. Goes with the territory, doesn't it? Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A, three, four, five, and six. Consult with the attorney, Pope versus the City of Albemarle, Economic Development, Real Estate, and Personnel.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Louder, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed, motion carries. We go back into regular session. Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion. All in favor say aye. And a opposed motion carries. Coming out of closed session, we have nothing to report. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until our next regular scheduled meeting on August the fifteenth at six thirty.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Whitley, second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.